To order, we can rise and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll move on to the greeting of the new board members. So we have four, five new more board members, right? So, I think both of you have the oath of office, so I think I'll have you stand. And I'm gonna have you guys read it. I don't have to read it to you, but if you want, I'll raise your right hand and you can read it together. So I swear.
I swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and that this is the special right of the United States to the school board members of the independent school district number seven twenty-six to the best of my judgment and whatever.
Alright, thank you and welcome, everybody.
Now it's official.
Now it's official, yes. Okay, and let's move on to the election of the senators. And so, nominations are now in order for the office of chair. Does anybody have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Aaron Jurick for president or chair.
I'll second.
No, no, I second neither.
Alright, alright, so all of those in favor?
I think he's.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, so.
Call for further nominations.
Are there any further nominations? If not.
You have to read it three times, I guess.
Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Okay, so Aaron Jurick is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair and I hereby declare Aaron Jurick elected by acclamation and direct acting clerk to record the minutes. We can switch and I can be done.
That's our sponsor.
Thank you.
It'll shut off. Alright, so thank you guys for nomination. We will now move on to nominations for vice chair. Do I have any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Connie Robinson.
Are there any further nominations for vice chair? Any further nominations for the vice chair? If there are no further nominations for vice chair, then I will declare that Connie Robinson is elected by acclamation and direct acting clerk to write those in the minutes. So congratulations, Connie. Moving on to office clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk?
I'll nominate Pete.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Pete as the office clerk. Are there any further nominations for the clerk? Any further nominations for clerk? If there are no further nominations, the nominations for the clerks are closed. Pete is the only candidate nominated and I hereby declare Pete to be elected by the acclamation direct acting clerk to record this. Congratulations, Pete. Moving on to nominations for office of treasurer. Do we have any nominations for treasurer?
Only Ryan Hubbard for treasurer.
Do we have any further nominations for the office of treasurer? Any further nominations for treasurer? There are no further nominations, the nominations for the office of treasurer is closed. Seeing that Ryan is the only candidate nominated for the office of treasurer, I hereby declare Ryan to be elected by acclamation and direct acting clerk to record it in the minute. Congratulations, Ryan. Well, welcome to a new year, welcome to the board, those of you who are new. And welcome back for those of you who have been here before. Before, so we have the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda as we have it written here? Nope, okay, then we'll start off with one G, the recognition of visitors in public. Oh, I'm sorry, one H, we have a presentation. SEL.
Mr. Boyer, intermediate school principal will be presenting about social emotional learning at the intermediate school.
Alright, evening, thank you for having me. Welcome to the new school board members.
Is that on?
It's on, it's on, yep. Do you guys see on the screen?
Just this one, yeah, we can see it.
Okay, but I got both on these screens, so, okay. Alright, well, as Mr. Schmidt had said, here to speak tonight about social and emotional learning and meeting the social and emotional needs of the intermediate school students. The Becker Public Schools mission statement is developing self-directed learners to thrive in a changing global community. And the Becker Intermediate Building Goal is directly from Strategic Plan Objective 3.3. During the 2022-23 school year, we will continue addressing mental health needs through social emotional learning at a variety of levels. And this is something that we have, as a staff, taken on upon ourselves to do. Something we've seen a need for and we've worked to where we are now and we continue to build upon this. It'll be just a short journey here through this for you all tonight. Why do we focus on and teach SEL? Social emotional learning is vital for all of our students because it teaches them crucial life skills, including the ability to understand themselves, helps students develop a positive self-image, helps students take responsibility for their actions, and helps students forge relationships with the people around them. That would include students and staff. At Becker Intermediate School, we utilize the Character Strong curriculum. The downfall of not utilizing an SEL curriculum is that if we didn't, there's always the possibility that the academic success of the students would be hindered if the social and emotional needs of the students is not met. Implementation of programs becomes fragmented and inconsistent if there's not one common curriculum. And educator retention may suffer due to burnout. All of those are reasons that we are continuing to move forward with our SEL curriculum. Why use the Character Strong curriculum? The Character Strong curriculum is a curriculum that's based on developing thoughtful, healthy, and kind human beings. The character of our kids is formed by their personal values and choices. The SEL components that are covered by Character Strong are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And when we had brought on the Character Strong curriculum two years ago, these were all considerations for this. And we've continued to build with this and go through and find more, more resources that we have from Character Strong that help us continue to work with our children. Skills for life and character development. Character Strong provides explicit, direct skill instruction designed to lead to three powerful outcomes: be strong, be kind, and be well. Instruction centers around one character trait per month. Practices support students to apply skills and character traits beyond the lessons. So therefore, it doesn't just happen in the classroom, it continues to happen in the hallway, happens on the playground, happens on the bus, happens at events. And that's what we're pushing for, is to teach our children this, give them the foundation so they can continue to carry this on throughout their education here and throughout life. Content is aligned with CASL competencies and vertically aligned from pre-K through 5th grade to build skills effectively. This is also used at the middle school and the high school. But the K5, pre-K through 5 has one portion of the program, 6 through 12 has another one. You may ask, what is CASL? And CASL is the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. And that is, that's the abbreviation that they use and that's where this competencies come from. For Character Strong, the classroom lessons go as follows. As you can see in the first column, be kind, social skills and conflict resolution. Working with the words respect, empathy, and cooperation. The second column, be strong, executive functioning, focusing, organizing, and goal-setting. We look at responsibility, perseverance, and courage. And finally, be well, wellness strategies, emotion regulation, gratitude, honesty, and creativity. If we can work with these traits, introduce these traits and build upon these traits with our students, we're building for a stronger future. Character Strong curriculum. The weekly focus is consistent across the grade level and gives a common theme across the building. In the 3rd grade, Character Strong, excuse me, there's two strongs there. Character Strong lessons are taught using the Character Strong website along with integrating the lessons into weekly activities. 4th grade, Character Strong lessons and activities are utilized weekly as well. 5th grade, as they begin to make that transition into the middle school, Character Strong lessons and activities are used weekly. Each day of the week has a theme that is followed. Movie Monday, I will add on, they're not full movies, just clips. Topic Tuesday, Right at Wednesday, and Thankful Thursday. Classroom conversations are also based on what is happening in the classroom on a daily basis. Specialists. SEL lessons are incorporated into essential skills. Brain breaks are incorporated into lessons. And vocabulary focus and discussion. There's also been, created a peace corner, when students need a break. Special education focuses on responsibility and respect for self and others. Daily conversations on what is going well and what we need to work on. Using Character Strong resources to support all. And our interventionists use a word of the month each Wednesday for a five to 10-minute lesson with all students during that win group time. We are now in the process of creating and gathering calming boxes. This is an Amazon wishlist fundraiser that is to create calming boxes for every classroom space. The requested items in conjunction with social emotional lessons will help students identify and manage their emotions while minimizing the disruption to learning. As you can see, the items that are there and also the QR code for anyone who would like to help donate to the calming boxes for the intermediate school. Thank you for listening and for having me here tonight. If there's any questions, feel free to ask me now or you can always get ahold of me later.
The calming, how are the calming boxes used?
Calming boxes. Let me open it up again. What is used for the calming boxes is that the students are, a lot of the time, where they will be able to go into a corner or just to regulate themselves. Give them a break, still be part of the class, but come over, go over to the corner of the room or a portion of the room and be able to take that break and get themselves from whatever might be bothering them at that time or might be distracting them.
Thank you. Yeah, within the calming boxes are a variety of tools, I don't know what they call it, what's it called?
Fidgets.
Fidgets?
Yeah.
That kids can use to kind of distract themselves, you know, keep their minds off of something, so.
And you can see on there, there's, there's stress balls, there's coloring, there's the poppets. There's a variety of things that they can use.
And kids in the high school have different things as well. Like they may have a ring that they're given, because some people, when they're nervous, will spend their ring or something like that. Different things, they don't necessarily have some of these things, but they have different things that they may have as well, you know, so it varies per grade level.
I think this is a really good idea, actually. I know a lot of my peers, especially in this, like when I was more so in middle school, but when I was a little bit younger, a lot of students really utilized it, especially kids who struggled with like ADHD or ADD. So I think that's a really great idea, especially to like regulate it and allow them like a space to have it for their own. I think it's really cool.
Well, thank you. And one of the big things that we're seeing is with assessments, is that there's a lot of testing anxiety. And it's not so much, I believe that the anxiety is more, but now the anxiety has become to the forefront where we're seeing it. And we're recognizing it and we're appreciating it and trying to work with it. That's what many of these are for.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer.
Thank you.
That's a big, SEL is a huge thing in education right now and so it's awesome to see it going to work so well in our schools like that. Okay, moving on to item number two, reports. We're gonna start with student reports.
Alright, so regarding things that have happened since last meeting, kind of going over activities and whatnot. The yearbook just finished with the class pages, they're now working on senior pages. Hockey has had a great start, winning its first four games, but since then, they've dealt with some injuries and illness and they're now four and five. They're trying to get back on top. Girls gymnastics has had five meets so far and are averaging a 137, which is a very, very strong score. They just placed third at a nine-team meet with a score that would land them at a spot at the state true team on January 28th. Robotics has been preparing for the upcoming season. As well, they hosted the season kickoff event here this past Saturday with over 150 students and coaches. The boys' basketball team was four and three with their first seven games. The student council hosted a door decorating contest and the judges were some of the custodial staff. Along with that, they did some hallway decorating and an ugly sweater day before break. The One Act Cast has been internally preparing for their first competition that is gonna take place like this month. Their show is named Crouns with Guns, which tackles the conversations surrounding school shootings around our country. Currently, the girls' basketball team is six and two with their losses being against Natanca and Providence Academy. They've suffered a couple injuries, but they're hoping to be back in full health the rest of the season. The wrestling team's had a great start to the season being eight and two and just completed a national tournament this past weekend, placing 18th out of 32 teams. The team has a few wrestlers injured and once they come back, they will be ready for whatever comes their way. The speech team has begun meeting and workshopping. This past month, the dance team has been, has been having their first two conference meets in which they received first place for both categories at both meets. They attended a few other competitions that were Corey, Eastview, and our first home event, which went very well. And this past month, the National Honor Society has completed many service projects surrounding the holidays, such as writing letters and delivering baskets to nurses who worked over Christmas and a winter clothing drive. Members of the National Honor Society also participated in the Secret Santa exchange.
Well, this month, yearbook has one section in and are working on the next deadline for January. Boys hockey has some tough conference games coming up. Girls gymnastics has a couple meets coming up and are hoping to add new skills to routines and to continue to grow their score. Robotics is excited to get to work on this year's challenge and as the official season just started, members are very excited and hopeful for their success. The DSA meets on Thursdays from 3:00 to 4:00 and continues to be a supportive group. Student council will continue to plan activities for snow days week from December 30th through January 3rd. Activities include a semi-formal dance and dress-up days. Boys basketball is now beginning to start conference playoffs. One Act will be going against other talented casts from other Mississippi eight schools for their One Act Festival on the 21st, subsections on the 26th. And should they advance, sections will be on February 2nd. For girls' basketball, most of this month is conference play for them. They play both Monticello and Chicago Lakes in double headers with the boys' team this upcoming week. Upcoming next, for wrestling, they have a few tournaments next week, including some conference and section duels. The speech team's first tournament is January 21st in Munarasta. In the next month, for dance, they'll be competing at their last competition at Monticello and their conference championship in North Branch, where they are set to receive the trophy for the fourth time in a row. The first weekend in February is their section tournament, which we are ranked second, top three move-on-to-state tournament, and currently ranked eighth in state for both kick and jazz, double A section. So they are hoping to place in the top six at state in prelims to go to the finals. NHS members are continuing to volunteer their time to various activities within the community. Are there any questions?
There's a lot going on, a lot, especially dance. Yeah, there's a lot. Dance is a lot going on too, there's like a whole paragraph, "Go dance."
Dance is right.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you ladies. So do you have members of each activity that reports to you on that?
Yeah, so that's a new thing we just started this year. We tried going through, at one point, like just emailing people, but that seemed not to be very effective. So we did talk about doing it in earlier meetings and we actually committed to it. We just used Snapchat. We understand it's not like a school-regulated messaging app, but it's the only way we actually receive responses from people. So all these people were kind of like pre-chosen and we made sure that they were okay with getting in reports. So, yeah, we just asked like, hey, can you give us a report, what has happened and what is going to be happening? And then they tell us any negatives or positives that they want to be brought into the light. So, yeah, it's pretty cool and it works pretty well.
It's working great because that's the most thorough updates we've had this year, the most thorough that we've had in 12 years, so.
Sure, well, thank you, we appreciate that, we appreciate that, thank you.
Busy, busy time. Alright, moving on to 2B, superintendent's report.
Thank you, and yeah, a lot of the reports are thorough because there's a lot of good stuff happening too. And so, superintendent report, one thing before I forget to mention it that's not on my report is Dwight Lundin, our head football coach, was recently awarded yesterday, the MFCA, National Football Coaches Association, award for, it's kind of essentially like the lifetime achievement, it's the influencer award. I call it the lifetime achievement award type of thing, but it just shows his dedication to support of football. And there's a huge national convention right now in North Carolina that he's a part of. It's NFL teams and coaches and different staff, it's got college, junior college, high school, all those types of people are involved in this conference. So he was recognized at that last night, yesterday evening, so. I didn't get that on my report because it was already in. School board members are registered for the MSBA conference. The strategic plan, just an update on that, we're continuing to work on the current goals for the strategic plan. One thing that we're looking at adding is Portrait of a Graduate. Some of you may have heard about that in other schools, kind of a trend that's going around schools. It's essentially a 10 to 15-year plan. So what does a student that comes in kindergarten, what does it look like when they're gonna graduate? And if you look back 12, 13, 14 years from right now, if you go backward to things, how much things have changed? And so we try to predict that for a kindergartner coming in and when we create this portrait of a graduate and try to determine how can we prepare them for something we don't know what it's gonna look like. And so that will be part of the next step that we're looking into doing. We would do that with some other area schools as a group, and so that would be, that's part of what we're looking at. But again, it's a prediction and you try to create broad things, like do we want them to be able to problem solve? And big things like that, so that would be tied to the strategic plan as well. Resource Training Solutions is seeking nominations for their board of directors. They've got three four-year terms, two are, have incumbents in them and one is an open seat. They hold meetings on the third Tuesday of each month at noon at Resource Training Solution. I'm not sure if that time works for anybody, but if nominations are due on January 31st and there's attached documents on there, I don't know if anyone on our board would have a problem if you self-nominated, if you really wanted to be on that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So if you want to nominate yourself or if somebody else wants to nominate you and you're available at that time, you can certainly do that. But I wanted to just raise that awareness for the board members. Attached is a recent update for the facilities project. We've been approved for a conditional use permit and have begun working on project work and meetings at each building. The facility auto transportation site is insulated and covered and so they're working on enclosing it fully and so that we can start some inside work. They had a lot of snow removal to do for the last couple of weeks. And they needed three non-presip days to get the insulation in and they found it, but it wasn't easy. There were a lot of delays because of that. So they rolled out all the insulation and then put it in. But we'll get people inside here soon and hopefully get back on track. The calendar survey, so the calendar is on the agenda, lower down on the agenda, but there were 202 responses for the calendar survey. Due to the timing of it, we didn't have a calendar committee meeting, but they were shared, the survey was shared with them as well. You can see some of the data here, but building results were split pretty evenly. So between 16% and 27% of the responses came from each of the four core buildings. One of the questions was about distance learning on early out days. 70% said no, no preference, with 36% of those were no. 23% said yes between all of those days or some of them. Spring break was interesting, I didn't, usually that's been a 50/50 answer, but in this one, this recent survey, 64% said yes and another 16% said they didn't care either way. So that's pretty high, usually it's in the 40, 40, and then 20 that don't care. 47% had no preference of when the spring break was, but 24% said March 25th to April 1st. And then 18% said March 29th to April 5th. So some of these are reflected on the calendar that was, is gonna be recommended here in the agenda. There was also another question, anything else or any other comments you have? And there was some really good information there, a lot of them, you know, talked about spring break or different days here and there and things like that, but some really good information from those surveys. And then I just attached, which we've already started utilizing, the first Monday in January. And then there's also dates with meeting restrictions attached. So if we get to the calendar part in the consent agenda, you can see if we have to change that at all. We can make sure we bring up that date or those dates so we don't have meetings on those days. That's it.
Alright, questions? Thank you, Jeremy. Committee reports, are there any committee reports?
None for me. Policy committee did meet last week with Jeremy and Summer to discuss 722. We feel that some very positive progress was made on it. We have moved through the definitions, I think we got all the way through the definitions, right Connie? So we will be scheduling another meeting next month to continue that and bring it forward for new first reading for February.
Yeah, we'll be meeting later, in January.
Right.
Any other committee reports?
Mark and I attended the Durbin Northern Wright Special Ed Co-op meeting on December 7th. The meeting was in Big Lake. We talked about the audit, so the audit was approved at that meeting. Some hiring updates, the Special Ed staff at the co-op continues to grow and they just asked to hire some more staff. They're having a hard time filling some of the positions that are there. So we talked about how we can continue to fix that and work on that. And then just, they thank Mark for his service with the co-op and then we're looking to, even though it's hard to fill positions, we're still looking to expand our co-op as well. And we brought in the grant writer for that meeting as well, so we just hired a grant writer just recently. They participated in the meeting, so hopefully we can get some grants and things between Monticello, Big Lake, and Becker, some cooperative type of grants. And the only other one I was wondering about is activities today?
No.
They didn't, okay.
Moving on to the committee assignments, can you guys open that up? We're all looking at the committees there. And if we first start with those of us that are, who are on the board, is there anyone that you want to vacate? That no longer works for you or you just want to step away from? Okay, then we'll go ahead and just walk through these committee by committee and see if everyone's still okay with where they're at. Activities advisory committee, Connie and Pete, you're on that. Maintain that. Administrative negotiations, that's Connie and myself. I'm not set if one of you two guys would rather have that. I'm okay staying, I'm okay leaving.
You can do it if you don't want it, so. And there shouldn't be.
Not this next year, but the following year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So it won't take place until next year, right? So it's a point.
Any questions there, will we reassign next January too, right?
Next January, we re-sign them all. Calendar committee, same thing, we're adopting calendar tonight, so it's a moot point until, well, I guess if you're on it now, you'll be in the December decision. Is there anybody who has a design? Is there anybody who has a desire to be on that?
I don't know.
I am on it right now.
Since yours are just one.
Yep, since you're just one, and then there's a handful of staff and a couple of parents, so. With, with the electronic surveys, it's easier to, to do that. I mean, generally the calendars move forward from last year with making changes with different holidays and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I could be on that if you want. If you're done with it, it doesn't really matter.
I can step off if you want to step on.
Sure.
I'll vacate it. Troy can be on it. Certified teacher negotiations, uh, currently it's Troy, Connie, and Mark was on that. So if these two want to stay, we definitely have an opening where Mark was at.
I can do that.
Troy's on the state. Did you go through that? I've not been through it yet, so I think I just. You've been through it already? Yeah, I'm willing to be on there.
So classified negotiations, um, that's myself, Pete, and Ryan was on that.
Can you describe it a little bit?
It's two eighty-four, cooks, parents, custodial, bus drivers, secretaries. So, I mean, we're.
I can fill the board with Ryan. Spot right. Looking for three still?
Yep. Um, community ed, that was one that Mark had. Does anybody have a passion for community ed? How often does that meet?
They meet most months. So they take off some of the, the months where there's snow days. So they have February twenty-third, March twentieth. They do meet at three-thirty. Um, so that, that may be a thing. Um, May, May twenty-second. They don't meet in June, July, and August.
Could do that more flexible as far as timing during the school year especially.
Excuse me, they do meet in August, but not September. I think that'd be tough at three-thirty for me. Brian?
For sure.
Perfect. Thanks, Brian. Um, curriculum advisory, um, Troy is on that, Mark was on that. Are you going to stay?
I'll stay.
So we're looking for one more.
Sure.
And those usually meet, those meet Mondays, kind of right before four, being that's the last couple of.
Yep, yep. They'll meet right before four. And it's three or four times a year? Yeah, it's not much. They're, I think they added one for next month. I think there is one on February. Yep. And then it's like two or three more times.
Okay.
Who, who was that, Connie?
Connie. ECFE, I've been on it for years. If somebody else would want to take that. They meet, generally they meet four times a year. Um, it's usually a Monday evening meeting. And it's just talking about guiding ECFE decisions and things like that.
I do.
Pete, you want to take that over? And then facilities, that's the buildings that are going on. Uh, currently myself and Troy. Ryan was part of that, so would somebody like to fill Ryan's?
I would be okay with it too.
I'd like to do it. That girl?
I'm willing to vacate that if Cory wants it too. I mean.
Put two of these on there?
Well, we haven't really, I mean, the bus garage is going, but the other things, yeah.
I mean, I'm not willing to, uh, I'm not looking to get rid of it, but if you have an interest in it, I'm willing to step aside that, but it's fine.
Well, I'm just looking at other ones that are coming too. Sure, I would take it. Are you, are you sure, Troy?
Yeah, no, that, that's fine.
Good.
Finance was Ryan and Connie, our financial background people. So.
But that's another one that meets at seven AM, right?
Seven AM, yeah.
Yeah, they meet.
And not every month, but.
And we've had, yeah, and we've had, I mean, we can call a lot of times. Kevin sends out the, uh, notes and information beforehand if this is needed.
And I'm, I have students coming at seven, so it's not working in my world. So, somebody else interested in finances?
We could do one at those meetings.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, you just get to report every time.
Yeah, well, and, and it is, I mean, for years we didn't have it. It's new in the last two years, three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, free and reduced price meal reps, I don't even know, they meet just one time?
I don't, we haven't met in years, so.
I think they're just listed, listed as the rep.
As the rep for the tour.
I can give it up. I don't think, I mean.
Individual contracts, we have Pete and Ra- Ryan was there, so that's an opening. Um, individual contracts are the directors, um, all the directors, right? Lieutenant's Bus Garage.
We had Ryan and Mark.
Oh, and Mark, yeah. I didn't have my page burned up over. So there's two opening.
Some of the, uh, directors, yeah. Did you say that?
And those are all a year out still, right?
Yes.
So will there be anything to do this year?
Uh, there might be.
Maybe one or two?
There might be the three.
The transportation and food.
No, uh, that, that's a year out, but, uh, the community ed director, the, um, and the ed, because the director of technology, I think, is different.
With the new person, new hire?
Person, but the other two, I think they're up to next year or that day. So a couple this year and then there's a bunch next year.
If, if nobody's interested, I could take that. I was on it a couple of years and then I stepped away, but I could take that one up again.
That's fine.
Yeah. So if we want another, we can add another one. I think two is probably fine also. Would you want to be on, Pete?
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else interested in being on that or are two okay?
Two should be good for next year. We only got a couple.
Nutrition representative. That's you. Have you met at all?
No, I think that's, that's the same as food. Somebody's requirements for the National Food Service program, so they just pretty much, I know it's you and we take care of it, but.
Yeah, I, I can, I can add that if someone's, or unless someone would like to add to their.
Resume.
So, policy committee, um, Connie and Pete are on that, and Ryan was also on that. Are you two staying on?
Yeah.
Anyone want to join them?
Do we need more than two? I don't know. It was good. The two, we can add someone?
If you want a third, I'd be willing to do it.
Put Ryan's name on there. At least somebody will always be at the meeting then. Sherburne Northern Right Co-op. That sounds like a perfect job for a teacher. Except for their, my supervisors.
That's true. I guess you can't be on it.
When I talked to one of them today, I'm like, "No, you don't have to pay for it."
And they typically meet quarterly or as needed. They may have some more meetings coming up, um, sooner than later with, with some of the changes that we have taking place or expect to take place with the co-op, but. The meetings are, you know, are long and the superintendents meet twice as much as, as that group. And so we usually kind of get everything lined up, so the meetings are pretty quick, um, for those, so.
Do you know when they meet?
No, um, they don't have a set date.
What time? They meet?
It's eve- it's evening, um, six, six-thirty, six, seven o'clock at night. And we rotate between, and we have rotated between Monticello, Big Lake, and Becker.
Are you interested? I don't know. I don't put my name in there.
Yeah, I was planning on doing the tech.
Okay, put me down for that.
I'm ready too. Do that better.
And they do have negotiations at some point too with that, with Cory's bosses, and so. Uh, I don't know, I don't. Do you know when the, their contracts are up? I don't think they're up this year either.
Um, well, their teachers follow the Monticello, so when, uh, so it's, um.
Then they can do it extra.
You know, I mean, so.
That'll be two years.
They might have some of the, the, the one.
Hey, how your negotiations?
When the, when the coordinator's done that one last year.
Was it just last year? I don't, I don't know.
Just last year, but they didn't go a couple of years.
Yeah, they did it, I think it was a three year.
Three years.
So, yeah, so it should be good this year, yeah.
Technology committee reps is on that. Troy would like that one.
There's, if you wanted to be on two, Cory, there's only one of us on there. We could both be on there if that's something you wanted.
Better as we leave the track the next, we could take that role.
That's fine.
Well, you're already on it, but I think Ryan was, Obermeyer was on there.
Yep.
And I could fill that spot.
Yep, and I don't know if, my name was on it, but I don't know that I've ever been to a meeting. So how often do they meet? Uh, tomorrow.
Unreal.
It'd be good, no?
Well, maybe.
It'd be, it'd be good if we were there because I can't make tomorrow. So who, who is that? Both of you?
Yep.
Yeah.
Is that all of them? Jackson, Cory, and Cory.
So Connie's, Connie has a lot. I don't know if it's really all.
Yeah, I know.
She just has six checkmarks. But someone is a free and reduced meal representative.
How do you nutrition, well, that's Pete.
And one of them is, a couple of them are negotiations that won't meet this year, so maybe you're okay, so I don't know.
Are we all happy?
Yeah, we're good to work.
Okay.
Get them all. Yep.
Moving on, item four, consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Is there any discussion? Alright.
Any, any thoughts on July third? I was going to bring that up when you brought the school calendar, but I think we should move that. If you're talking about having a meeting on July third, yeah, I think we should push that. There's, there's a lot of people to be gone on that, I would think.
Troy, ten?
Because last year it was on the ninth, so.
Yeah. We've moved it, sometimes I think, sometimes, if I look back, sometimes it's been on a day or two before or after. After's probably easier than before.
And that we won't have any elections to worry about in November, correct?
Shouldn't, yeah. So do we need a motion to move that or? I think we, we just amended and say.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um, approve the consent agenda with the change of the July meeting going from the third to the tenth.
I'd second that.
Okay, any further discussions? I'm sure you guys have all had a chance to look through it. A lot of this is just legality of, we gotta choose a newspaper, we gotta choose superintendent, business managers, okay things. Um, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Um, item number five, gifts.
Make a motion to accept the gifts.
Do we want to read through the gifts?
Make a motion that we'll discuss. We have a second. Connie? Okay, discussions about gifts. Those of you that are new, I don't know how close you've been following along, but this is a short list. But generally, this is the type of money we see that's being donated to activities in our schools. Um, it's amazing for the side of our community how the money just keeps flowing in as gifts. And I think we need to always make sure we thank those people that are helping to provide for our, our students here. I said I don't know what the finances look like in other districts, but I know we see thousands and thousands of dollars come through every month. Amazing, so.
Agreed.
And the Lions are always on there, every month. So if you see a Lion, take a pause, their donations, because they're consistently on this list.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. And even if they're not on this list, they're out there helping every booster club out there that shows up on our sun door. So it's a pretty good organization. Yeah, or the city.
Or, yeah. Any further discussions on gifts? Okay, we have a motion to accept. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Um, item number six is the school calendar. It's, I think there, if you'd like to click it, open it up. Um, these were sent out earlier, so you all had a chance to kind of put your eyes on it. Jeremy, you have anything you want to speak through?
No, the one I did send you is a draft, uh, the only differences, I believe, are graduation day on May thirty-first and then the last day of school on June fifth. I don't think those were on, on the, I sent you, or maybe they were a day off or something. Everything should have been what I, was in the draft. Um, again, this aligned with the results of the survey. We also added, um, added a couple of early outs to get some more staff development time in, in with our, with our teachers and things with, with strategic plan, um, portrait of a graduate, um, some new data and things like that that we're gonna try to, try to crack down on. Um, those types of things, we want to make sure that we're utilizing our staff development time to, to improve our teaching and learning.
So if the early outs we run like we were this year, where secondary schools, e-learning and younger kids?
No, I, um, the results of the survey, I don't know if I had that in there.
Yep.
Uh, did I, oh, no, I, we're gonna switch those to, to everyone's in school on those days.
Okay.
That was what most people wanted on that. And the results were different because some teachers have had distance learning through those and some have been personal all the time anyway. Uh, so we tried to split it up so we could kind of analyze both sets. But both sides of it were, were predominantly bringing the kids in. There still were some that wanted to do one or two e-learning type of days so the kids could be ready for some snow events or different, different weather events, but. Are we planning on doing snow days the same as we did this year? Where if it's a, well, we have one, I think we had one and after that they were e-learning days? Yeah, yep, we have to, pretty much have to do it that way because we have a minimum number of days, a minimum number of hours that we have to have students, um, here. And so, um, we'll use the five e-learning days, we'll create a plan, get that approved again for this, this next coming year. And then, uh, once we get past five, really they all are made up, or six, I guess, because we get the one, one true snow day, um, or day off, I guess. But after that it gets, gets to be e-learning or, or made up.
So five is the cap?
Five is the most you can do. Well, MDE did send out a survey last week to, to schools asking how many we use. I think, you know, we're probably on average, but I think some schools use quite a few, uh, e-learning days or all five of their e-learning days and had more days off after that as well or before then, so. And there's some schools that don't have e-learning plans that are approved. So if they're in our same boat, took five days off, then they're making them up.
And the calendar won't be affected by construction or vice versa?
No, I talked to them and they, they said they were good, good with it and it shouldn't be, shouldn't be impacted now. I'm sure there could be stuff that comes up and it always seems like any construction project, whether it's a big one like we're doing or a million dollar one, that maybe was a bunch of small things. It seems like at the end of the summer, well, our gym floor this last year in the intermediate school, for example, didn't get done until, is he still here? October, November, when, maybe, maybe it's not done yet, I don't know, but, um, yeah. You always run into stuff like that anyway, but they don't anticipate anything as long as we stay on schedule.
So we have a motion to approve calendar as seen?
Almost approved.
I'll second.
Any further discussions? Okay, all of the favor of the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four calendar as approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed, motion carries. Takes us on to item number seven. Uh, there's five policies here. These are review only. Maybe small changes to legal change, but nothing major in there, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. So, uh, policy two oh eight allows us to do these in one vote. Um, policy two oh eight also says that we have to review our policies, and we just approved this one last year, two oh eight. Um, but, um, Article five subdivision D states that the school board shall review policies at least once every three years. Um, so we're gonna start amping some of these up, but a lot of them will be have minimal or no changes, uh, in case, and I think these five or six here are in that same, in that group, and so. No, no changes, but they're just there, so if anyone else wants to bring them up, or if anyone wants to speak about those from the public or anything like that, they're available to them and kind of bring it to their attention.
So do we need a motion on that?
Yep, there's still a vote to, to approve, and then we'll update the revised date.
Entertained a motion to approve those five policies before us?
All motion to approve.
Any further discussions? All those in favor of approving policies one oh two, two oh two, two oh three, two oh three dash one, two oh three dash six, that's the four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move this on to item number eight, second readings. So those of you that are new, we had these all come for us last week, last month for the first reading. Um, Jeremy then gathered any input changes taken from that. Obviously, there's none after our first second reading.
Yeah, first, these policies, there were no, no new input or anything like that. They're, they also have very minor changes. Um, and you can see those listed in the description, um, the legal reference for matching for a strategic plan, 'cause we changed policy two twenty-three where the goals were listed in there, but now that we've got the strategic plan in place, that's where we'll have all of that information. Five thirty-four was part of a new, um, attorney general opinion, which we were already following, so we were good with that, but I wanted to bring that up just so people were aware of that.
I want to entertain a motion on that, do they have it line by line?
No.
Do them all one. Entertain a motion for those policies changed?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving policy two oh one, two oh three dash two, two twenty-three, and five thirty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to item number nine. Adjournment, this meeting is adjourned.